Gina, did you start the recording? Curious.
Unmute. Okay, can people hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, that's why you weren't answering me when I was asking you a question.
There you go.
Okay, now we're going. Chris is here. Okay, so in the room, we have me, Bill, Chris, Frank, John, and Craig, and we have Brad on Zoom. So all of the planning board members are present with one on Zoom. So we have a call. Welcome, everybody. Public comment period for items not on the agenda. So does anybody have any comments on anything which is not on tonight's agenda? Anybody on Zoom? I don't think so. Nope. Okay, but we'll move on. So let's go to nine thirty-three Dryden Road.
Okay, and we do not have the applicants here, so.
So we want to skip?
Yep.
Skip that. Okay.
They're coming.
It should be. We saw him last Thursday night.
Okay, so we'll skip that for the moment, and we'll go to twenty-one fifty Dryden Road Automotive Repair Garage.
So come up. This is an SUP before the town board. The town board got introduced to this last Thursday night, and they said hearing for May fifteenth. So they'll be dealing with the special use permit application, and it is here before the planning board for purposes of reviewing the site plan to make recommendations to the town board. The town board will be the body doing seeker and the special use permit. But you can weigh in on those aspects of the application also.
Okay, and who's sharing this? Is Gina?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Corey Mosley. I have a business called Municipal Relations Consulting. I make that known for other reasons, so that I'm not here on behalf of other things. So that's clear. I'm here to help and assist the applicant, and I'll let him introduce himself.
How you guys doing? My name is Emile Gorgon.
And this gentleman is the one that operates or is looking to continue operation of an auto repair garage in the facility at twenty-one fifty Dryden Road. Now, a little bit of confusion here is all the parcels are twenty-one fifty Dryden Road. So but there is a, there's two buildings that are tucked way back in, roughly about twenty-seven hundred feet off of the road. By way of driving, that is. If you were to have a straight line, it's roughly about nineteen hundred feet onto Route thirteen or Dryden Road. And that's the two buildings. Which.
Oh, I was gonna show your lines there.
Okay. Which are the two white dots on the screen in front of you. In addition to that, the measurements here also identify the measurements to adjoining areas, whether that be residential areas, residential houses, roads, et cetera. So there's into if you look in general, you know, to twenty-two, two fifty-one Johnson Road, you're about thirteen sixty-nine away from that one. The closest property would be along George Road, and I believe it would be three thirty-four, and that would be about eight hundred eighty-six feet, roughly. Just as a straight line goes. So just point of reference. In the application materials we put together, we do have the proposed repair garage previously prior to the solar. It was RPM, which was an agricultural use, and so we're looking for a change in occupancy essentially from an agricultural use to this auto repair garage. Roughly, the area, the lease area is about two point one acres. There's two buildings on site like I identified, and one is about forty by sixty with a portico that's about twenty-eight by thirteen, and then there's an additional building that's about fifty by eighty. Again, on screen in front of you, the lease line is identified in purple, kind of outlined in a yellowish color, just so you could get the idea. We are in receipt of the comments from the fire department. So we've been in contact with an engineer to bring them on board to deal with fire apparatus access, to identify how we could build that appropriately. Obviously, that's going to get into some soil disturbance. On the application in front of you, we indicate there's no soil disturbance. We're waiting to hear back from the fire department to see what they had to say about access before we went down that adventure. So at this point in time, we made contact this week, and hopefully we'll have more information soon to deal with that. Just for you.
To be clear, so you own the business, you're leasing the property.
Correct.
And the property owner is also on, also here, but on Zoom, Ron, right?
I am here, yes.
Myron, welcome. Yes, yes, we can.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, good.
Yep, thanks, Ron. Hi, Ron. I just want to be clear that there's two here.
Absolutely.
That are in.
Very good. Thank you. In walking down through, we've gone by point and point analysis based on what's in the Dryden Code. So each point we've addressed. If you don't want to read each individual one to you, I'm assuming that you've read through them. You probably have questions. I've been in front of you before. I know you're a very inquisitive bunch, and you do have questions, and you do have comments. On the third page, we start identifying what some of the other automotive repair garages in the area. And then we also identify other uses in the areas, commercial uses. Obviously, the biggest use in the area is also a cemetery, which is next door. Based on the location of the existing buildings, the solar arrays, the distance from the roads. It's very difficult to actually see this from a public way unless you were to drive down this area. I did not prepare any photos from roads, but I could get those for you if you'd like.
I can bring them tomorrow for any other.
Fortunately, I think most of us are pretty familiar with this property, so.
Outlined in the yellow area on the plan is a, is a vehicle repair parking area that would be outlined in preparation for vehicles that the, that Emile would be pulling in to repair. The area in green is identified as vehicle for individuals' visitors. So those areas are identified. The yellow areas, one would be able to house about nine vehicles, the other would be about twelve vehicles. So and then the green areas identified for the visitor parking. Now, the smaller area would be about three parking spaces, while the elongated area would be about seven parking spaces in total. Handicap accessibility, we're proposing to put at least one space underneath the portico, signage underneath there as well for individuals that that need access in that capacity.
Pretty much the closest available parking spot that can be walked towards a door, and it's underneath the awning, so again, still, I don't know, offensive against the elements and stuff.
I don't believe I have any other items, just kind of as a high level overview for you to look at. What questions may you have that we might be able to answer for you?
The, the building, sorry, the building on the left, I guess, next to the yellow ones is the one that I'm operating on.
Right.
And the building on the right is just a structure that's I've been using just for storage, nothing related to the business.
But it's part of your lease, right?
Yeah, it's a part of the lease, yeah. I just use it to store vehicles sometimes. So we had hail a couple of times last year, so. Like the cars, and maybe there's a percentage.
Is that an open-sided building, or is it?
No, that's enclosed as well. Yeah. And, and there's more proposed modifications to the aesthetics of it at this point in time. There's no modification to the parking areas. At this time, obviously, we just talked about the fire access. So based on the comments from the fire department, we'll be having a proposal come through on that.
Go ahead. You done?
Yes, sir.
I still have questions about the four lots on a common driveway to Ray. Yeah, I brought this up last month.
Yeah.
And I noticed that you call it a secondary use now. I mean, where, where in this zoning law do we have the secondary use definition? I looked for it, I couldn't find it. So maybe you could lead me to that.
Well, so this is a, we have five lots back in this twenty, property twenty-one fifty. So the first question about the access, the solar SUP was predicated on a locked gate. So there would have to be a modification of the solar SUP to accommodate this use. As far as multiple uses on a property, we have done that in the past. It's not really a secondary use. It's a, it's a second primary use on a property. So, so we have somewhere there's, you know, a retail business and a residential business.
Where, where in the zoning law does that, is it allowed? I don't, I didn't find it in, in anything in the subdivision law or the, or the zoning laws. I'm wondering where that came from. And because you clearly put it in the documents that it's a secondary use to the, if you look at New York State law, the secondary uses or accessory use is attached to another business of a like, of a like business. So I mean, I remember when Agway went through to get a farmer's market put on the Agway that they considered that a secondary use, which is sort of complementary to Agway. But I don't see the complementary use for this. So I'm, I'm wondering where that second, why you call it secondary use if we don't have a law for secondary use.
Well, I'd have to research that and give you the exact chain of how we get to a second use on a single lot without having to subdivide.
So the, so the other question is that a leased lot is considered a subdivision in New York State law. Now, if it's on, if it's under five acres, it's, but we have a town law. So if you, you know, if you're going to look at state law, it's one law. But we have a zoning law, but so this, to me, this isn't even, it's like a gray area. A second, we don't have secondary use. So I'm, some questioning some of these, the methods of what we got here, so.
I'd like to add something, if I could.
Go ahead.
Great. All right. So one of the things that if we, if we look back into time when RPM owned it, and it was one parcel, the road was, was established for their use. And then when it was subdivided subsequently for the solar farm, and if you remember, the cell tower also went in. So the, when I took ownership of this in October, the access driveway, or yeah, the access driveway allows universal usage for the solar company, the cell tower company, my use. And, and it was something that I believe you all addressed when the subdivision went in. So it seems like that access easement to the, to this driveway is, has already been established for this property. Am I wrong on that?
Well, there is access to every use that is currently permitted there, yes. But we're not, I mean, this would be a, you know, yet another use of a different kind. And again, the other uses were predicated on a certain amount of traffic, and this is a different amount of traffic on that driveway. So we have to establish the compatibility with the solar facilities restrictions, the cell towers needs, and now a new business which has an active public access need.
So if I could add to the, that used to be an agricultural road. It went through the wetland, which was not supposed to be used, and solar was exempt from a lot of that. So they said they put down the mats, the timber mats to cross the wetlands and all that. So it's been changed. Somebody's changed it between. So I don't know why that's all about, but so that, so that, that road was never really approved for for like a building lot, you know, or for, for housing. It was basically there for solar and the cell tower. So I mean, we're, so we're sort of, we got some, to me, I think we got some gray area going on here. What's going on with a lot of this thing? So I'm, I'm just questioning why. So now we're up to, this would be the seventh lot in there.
But those buildings were put in under RPM, so they were accepted as, as the roadway to get to those buildings.
As an agricultural road, yeah. So we, we went through this with Mr. Penny at the time and asked him, what are you going to use this for? Because it's going to have an impact down the road. And if he was strictly for agri, he was going to store, it sounded like hay and, and some agricultural equipment. You know, and so it, it was just this, and I remember we pushed it. We never got answers from him because he was, it was, I don't know, you remember? I don't.
Yeah, he said it was personal and you're selling.
Yeah. And that, and then, so that, that's why sort of the locked gate, from what I remember, was one, to keep people out of the solar installation, and the other was to keep people out of the wetlands. And that wasn't a planning board decision or a town board. That was just offered up by the solar company. They said, oh, yeah, we recognize that we don't want people back in there. Because you are crossing a wetland, you are crossing the Willow, the Willow Glen Creek and all that. So but my concern now is that you've got six lots on this road that's a common driveway, and the town boss has four. And now you're asking, even though it's a leased lot, a leased lot is considered a subdivision. So how, how do we, how do we, how do we finagle this? And, and I said last month, I said, just make it a, maybe get a private road and make it develop it into something, whatever you want. And this would be solved. So but that was only a suggestion. So that mean, so there is another after, so you know, so you've got a common, you've got a common driveway. The next step is a private road, common driveway for lots.
Do you have standards for private road?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll teach you how we're up to.
They're here. Consult with the town engineer.
Is that TG Miller?
TG Miller, yeah.
So, but I mean, that, to the private room, you could put more on it. And it seems like that's the direction this is going. And I hate to say, so you allow this all of a sudden, when he wants to put another building in, and it's a leased lot, where, where are we supposed to, where do we say, hey, no, we did it for this, only didn't for that one. And I have to say that I believe that we were pretty clear about the barns when the solar went in.
Yeah.
And I think by increasing the width of the fire apparatus access, we're already heading towards a private road based on the pounding to a farm in from the fire traps. I mean, typically, your state fire code requires twenty-five thousand pounds.
Right.
Minimum. So I mean, that's pretty much a, a private road as it is now. I mean, I don't know what your standards are. I haven't, you know, I haven't talked, obviously, to TG Miller. But we can open up those discussions if that's something that the board would like us to do. Ray brought up some additional traffic, and so I, I'd point to page five. I did put together some, some numbers. I think it's page five. Maybe.
Yep.
Dealing with traffic impact and what they believe they would, would have. I did take a look at the tenth edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Common Trip Generation, which they show three point eleven vehicle trips for one thousand square area for automotive care center. That's the closest use I could find within that engineering requirements. You know, based on the building size, you're talking about eleven point four seven vehicle trips at peak time. Now, that's based on engineering standards. I did ask Emile what his typical day looked like. He anticipated between two and five vehicles a day because he's a buy appointment only individual. He doesn't typically allow people to just to stop in and actually just say, hey, I'm having vehicle trouble. So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't do drop in. Everything is call only, and because I specialize in certain type of vehicles. I don't just do everything. And I prefer that way because it limits me of how much work I can do per day.
Right.
And I don't like that that's too much work because it's just, so I don't bite more than I can choose to have a deal.
Do you have cars that sit there for long periods of time, or is it mostly?
Just some of the vehicles that I buy and use for repair.
Okay.
The whole business pretty much turned from a hobby to a business a long time ago.
I got you.
I buy vehicles based on, you know, let's say, engine blew up or something. And I buy it for X amount of dollars, and then I take time to fix it, and then I give it to whatever condition it needs to be to be either sold at the auction or private or whatever, and then I just.
Right. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, when I think about other auto repair places around, like you look at White's in Freeville, or you look at Scotty's, right, they end up with, like Scotty's especially ends up with, he's got tons of cars there all the time.
Yep.
But you don't anticipate, you don't anticipate. You've got quite a few cars up there.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, I don't know. And there's a fair amount of spaces there. I'm just wondering if it's going to run out of space, but.
They'll run out of money.
Yep. No, there's a, there's a big parking lot all over there.
Yeah. So the biggest thing for me is the turnaround. Like, I don't like to sit on something for a really long time. It loses value over time. And with elements and whatnot, cars do rust just sitting. So to me, it makes no sense just to have them sit there for a while. With, with this whole transition, it was I needed a little bit more space for what I had from previous shop, and this place fit the bill. And now I'm just trying to play the catch-up in the process of doing all this in.
Brad has his hand up. Where is he? He's on Zoom. He's up there.
Other areas, I've seen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me? So I'm just following along, listening, and you know, there, I guess, just a couple of things that jumped out at me when I was reading the, the, the supplemental, the application. And, and, and you've already been talking about it. It's the, the, the comments from the fire department with the, the way that the apparatus, the, you know, places for, for pulling off so that a vehicle can get by. And, and, and the, the, the distance, you know, the hundred fifty foot becoming really more like two hundred and eighty-five feet. So things like that are just, you know, I, I think need to be addressed and complied with eventually. And so that, so that was like a safety thing with fire and emergency access. The other thing that I noted in, in the, the narrative on page four was talking about oil, metal parts. It, it sounds like it's, I'm, I'm not clear on how disposing it using a garbage disposal service, service is, is really protecting the the ground and, and any contamination potential. You know, I, I, I've been through this personally with other projects, and you know, there are some times over long periods of time, if there are vehicles stored, you know, contaminants and PCBs and other, other materials that, that accumulate. So that's an environmental concern on that score. So I just hope that we, as we're going through this, that we, you know, do this the right way and, and, and help the the, the tenant have a, you know, a safe and, and, you know, legitimate thriving business. But I, I would like to see the planning board, you know, take all that into, into, you know, consideration. There were some other things, but I think that's, that's, those are my primary ones. Thanks.
This is spring. Can I just chime in and echo Brad's concept about the oil? Because I was wondering about that since the building was originally designed for agricultural use. I don't know, you know, if it's got poured concrete or, you know, how your your spill containment, how tight, tightly that's addressed both in.
Thank you, Roger. That actually raises a question I had, though. Is the building department going to require upgrades to the building to actually do this? I know that's not our purview, but that would be, I think, an important part of this, too, is that, you know, building that has to be.
Most likely, since it's a change of use, that there would have to be, you know, different codes applied that are not presently part of the calculus when that was built. Like, I don't think there's floor drains or anything in there, and.
There's no lot either, right? So that's.
Yep, that's right.
There is water present on the property, just not on the two point two acres that I'm leasing at the moment.
There's a well?
There is, I believe, two wells, and I was only be able to find one.
But it's not, it's not located in your, toward development that you don't.
No, so the, currently, I don't have water there. My plan is to drill a well with approval and everything and set up the well.
So that'd be part of this whole end goal.
And yeah, I mean, I need to have facilities and water and everything there, long-term planning. And currently, I don't use water for anything, honestly. We, you know, do like clean hands and whatnot. You have solutions and stuff, but.
You'd have a bathroom, bathroom facility, too.
I live less than three miles away, so usually if I need to, I go home quickly.
Wow, that's a long way to go to Pete. Nothing, just a.
So the, the well part of it, I need to look into and find a local business that does well drilling and ask them about, you know, the code and cost and everything, and how everything is set. As far as the building goes, the concrete is eight feet, I mean, sorry, inch, inches deep, so it's standard for any automotive repair shop to put a lift up or any sort of equipment or heavy vehicle.
And I believe you have containers inside that you put all your oils in and items of that nature. They don't sit outside?
No, no. So the, all the used oil or coolant is stored in IVC tubs, which by the time they fill, I either give the oil away to a local business that uses it to heat their garages. Usually, that's pops over in Cortland. And coolant, there's a company that will come and you pay them, and they'll pick it up and dispose of it for you. As far as trash goes and everything, Casella has a bin that gets picked up once every two weeks. And all my scrap gets stored until somebody that I call and I give it away. I usually give the scrap away to either a buddy of mine or something, and they give it to it. So yeah, everything as far as junk parts or used materials gets disposed of properly. Yeah, it's dirty stuff. I don't like dealing with this.
So it seems like there's a lot to figure out here still, right? We have, we, we probably have to upgrade the road. It's a wetland, DEC. Where the well will be located if it gets closer, the upgrades to the building, it seems like would be premature to really.
Well, with the upgrade to the building, like you said, wouldn't be in the plan, planning words, purview would be in the administrative proposals based off the building. Right. And, but.
This should be continued.
No, no, yeah, understandable. So I'm not, I'm just following up on what you had identified.
But placement of the well on septic would be part of the site plan review. I don't think he's talking septic.
Uh, no, he was proposing to put a, a, a porta john aside for bathroom facilities at this time. That's what his proposal was.
I don't have a waiting room. Nobody sits and waits for their car. Everything is drop-off, pickup type of deal. So I don't see. Actual facility.
And you've got no employees. You have no employees, right?
Not yet.
So we can, we can take a look at the well situation where one would be placed. We can follow up with TG Miller on road specifications and having our engineer contact them, just dealing with what that is. And I, I don't know, those are the kind of two items that were, seemed like of importance.
Is it, is this, is the wetland regulated?
The wetland is mapped. There's existing culverts that have been placed, so.
But it's not a state-regulated wetland?
That's tough to say, actually, in all honesty, because the DEC has changed the regulations at the beginning of the year. So it all depends on what the modification is in comparison to where the mapped areas are determining by them coming out on site.
So that, that needs to be run to ground.
Yeah, we just need to understand what the dimensional status would be for the fire access to begin with before we jump down the road of the DEC.
Ray, a question for you. We recently had a discussion with a guy running a car repair shop about storing unregistered, uninspected vehicles on site. Remind us of what the regulations are for that.
Well, the town law does have a only one unregistered per lot. Well, the town law does have a only one unregistered per lot. Uh but with the case of a repair shop, uh when we went through with Scotty's. Um there was. An acknowledgement in that process that there would probably be a few more than that involved in a repair shop operation.
Did that go quantified or was it?
It did not get quantified, it was, yeah, just that more than one would be appropriate. But that could be.
So your your vehicles are registered, unregistered?
Um define registered. Like plated.
Plated plated, yeah.
Um well, the ones that I purchased myself, no. They sit there until I either fix them and then register them, until they're fixed, they're just cars.
So huh, so that's a big barn, so that that law, you can store them in a barn inside, it's only outside storage, right?
It's supposed to be one unregistered per lot.
Oh, I thought it was inside story, it's per lot.
I think the nearest property maintenance code identifies that any vehicle can be placed inside uh. And it cannot be disrepair on the exterior, if my memory serves me correct.
I don't think it had to be registered if it was.
No, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the town law is, I'd have to defer to Ray, obviously.
Yeah, interesting. Oh. Well, at least in this case, the visibility, there's really no issues with visibility and all that, it's not like, it's not like some of these that are right up by the road that. You know, we try to have people put things behind them and all that, that's really not an issue here, because it's so far.
My biggest uh appeal to this property was the fact that it was away from everything.
Right.
And nobody bothered me and I don't bother anybody type of deal. Um and like I have huge passion for cars, so I I love working on vehicles without, you know, getting in somebody's way, so. Um that was my huge appeal and.
Sure, you don't want to lock that gate, huh? Go to work and lock the gate behind you.
Well, and that, so to me, the the two biggest issues at the moment, right, are. Fire access, making sure that the road can handle that.
That's a, that's a biggie.
And the S U P. Was the S U P modified when the cell tower went in with that locked in regards to that locked gate? Because I I I found out the S U P specified that that gate up by the road had to be kept locked.
Yeah, and I don't think it was modified with the cell tower.
Yeah, and and once when the cell tower went in, it stayed the same, right? Because the idea was they, you know, the property owner could have access, the. Cell tower people could have access, the solar panel people could have access, but that that gate out by the road was supposed to be locked, so that it wasn't like public. Access going back in, so that the gate by thirteen, so if that's still in the S U P for the solar farm. And for the um and for the cell tower, then there would have to be a modification, right, to. To allow that gate to be sort of open to the public.
And I would add that you'd need to contact the solar facility. Provider and the cell tower to see if they're okay with it, because they're the ones that asked for the lock gate. It wasn't, it wasn't a requirement of us.
Right.
Yeah, they would definitely be have to be involved in that modification of their S U P.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We can't initiate that, Ron has his hand up.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, good, uh um I'm glad uh you're bringing these points up. One thing I wanted to say to Brad is that uh. Emile is very environmentally conscious, um so he would, he would do things that would not be. You know, that would not be um dangerous to the environment around his building. Um the other thing is that uh many of you don't know that he's a, he has a great reputation. He's decided to move his business to Dryden, which is to our benefit. Um he has uh um you know, not only does he do really good work, but he's an asset to our community, he's a resident of our community. So um you know, it would be great to support him and especially um in the fact that we are developing. You know, a number of repair shops, which I think is a a good strength for our for our, you know, the base of our town. Um and on the regard regarding that driveway, uh I do want it to be um open now. I will remind everybody too that the cell tower is fenced in, all the solar is fenced in. Uh and I'm happy enough to interface with both of uh those um entities. Uh to talk about that road being an open road uh to the rest of the property.
Right. Well, I mean, it is the the issue is that in the S U P, there were, there was a stipulation that that gate be locked, right? So that that's that's the thing we need to address.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be changed, I'm just saying that there there is that stipulation in that S U P.
Address that, yeah.
I think there are some issues with some of the fencing around the solar. Um. I believe there's one area where like the gate has like very large gaps between the gate and the and fencing.
For wildlife activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can people just go through them too, but.
Yeah, that's.
Uh.
You could climb under that one.
Yeah.
That one in the north side.
I I helped emics that a little bit.
And again, I don't know, you know, again, it comes down to what is the, you you know, what are the, what are the solar. Farm requirements, right? What is it, you know, making sure that they have the fencing. Uh in a way that it's the way it needs to be, right, I guess.
Well, I guess we could address that, because this is a modification of.
Right.
Site plans, right, we could say.
Yeah.
Especially if you're gonna eliminate the gate at the street, that the other gate should be closed off, so.
Hmm.
Somebody couldn't climb under.
Right, right.
Yeah, we had a issue, because they um. The solar people, they subcontract a couple of local farmers to bring their sheep to.
Yep, yep.
Uh to eat the grass.
Yep, yep.
Mow it and stuff, so every time I see a sheep and you know, in need of help or whatever, I call the guy and he comes and helps. So we noticed that coyotes been in and out, so um we addressed some of the gates and I think I know which one you're talking about. Because it's right before you turn left into the.
Right, it's it's on the right as you're going, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Guess like a board for now.
Right.
Problem is, whenever um. Individual who fixes the solar panels comes in, sometimes they leave them open or they don't close it all the way and they don't wait.
They leave the gate open?
Yes.
Oh, that's not good.
It's usually up to me to find it in the morning and fix it.
Wow, they leave it open, wow.
Well, whoever they um.
Contractor.
The contractors.
To to repair the wiring or monitor boards.
Wow, okay.
But yeah, I I I keep a pretty close eye on the grounds, just because there's a lot of wildlife there and my partner, she uh works in with Cornell Wildlife. Um labs, so familiar with all the.
Right.
Local animals.
So the the other, if you're talking site plan review things, that pipe to that northern, the crosses Willoughby Creek should be removed. I think there's a culvert that crosses that goes, that Willoughby Creek goes through, and that was never part of the solar site. They're supposed to use.
When we amend the S U P to pull that out.
That should be removed. You can see where it's washed out several times, but they keep putting, there's raft there now.
Yeah, this is, this is off of this main driveway, it's the part that there's a, if you go, when you go in, pass the so uh pass the cell tower. If you were to turn right to go.
Way off, so, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you take a right.
There's a culvert in there that was not part of the original site plan, but that's that, that's really the solar. Site plan, right, not this, not this site.
Well, but you're amended site.
Right, right, right.
Ask for that to be removed, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, most we saw was beneficial to have it.
Well, I it, I would, I would talk to the army, because they're gonna make you put a a bottomless culvert in.
Army Corps?
Yeah.
Yeah, they modified because of the navigable waterways, they modified what they do and don't uh get in for jurisdictional, that's why the D E C modified. Uh but they also have uh. Five different types of permit applications now, I think, to streamline.
Well, that that used to be a class C truck, right, yes, and that's why they probably want the flat bottom rather than a round bike. Or remove it.
Yeah.
And just drive over.
Hmm.
That was their original intent, so um.
Okay, so it sounds like private road, fire access, um well, D E C wetlands. Uh S U P with the gate and the pipe with the Willoughby.
And have you talked to David about stormwater at all?
I did talk to him about stormwater uh originally, yes, but that was prior to receiving comments from the fire department. So hopefully, what I'd like to do is get uh our engineer on board, having discussions with T G Miller, see what the actual soil disturbance will be. And then see what needs to be done for the stormwater.
Because my concern would be the oil and leaching off the cars that are in repair that getting into the wetland. So some sort of containment that might slow it down.
Like a uh some sort of berm, yeah.
I mean, David, David would be the one to talk to, but I think.
Yeah, but we can, we can.
At least address that, so it's because it, because that's up high and everything is draining into that wetland, so.
Yeah, but I'm, I can chat with when they're talking about soil disturbance activities, if if a berm was satisfy you, then.
It would catch, catch some other runoff, yeah.
Ray, I have a question for you, so if a private road goes in, does that kind of take care of the subdivision issues that have been brought up?
Um well, yeah, we'd upgrade the driveway to a private road, so we wouldn't be restricted by that, what's now five lot. Limit, uh so that would open up to seven lots, we're looking at least lot being seventh.
Okay, and then.
Or more, right?
All right. Like, in this case, because the original S U P, the site use changed quite a bit and the um the original site plan. Like the, like, like the road going through the wetland, for instance, uh like stormwater was modified heavily in that in different spots. So in that case, how does the, I guess my, just kind of more procedural question, what about the original S U P, like? The, should that have been revoked a long time ago, or does this just come up based on when site things happen?
And because of everything, the culvert.
I mean, the site was developed over time, so I just didn't know based on like the original, when it got approved. Like how this, like if this comes up often, I haven't seen it in my short time on the board, but.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, the road may have degraded over time, so it's not the same road, and they, not the same driveway that we approved and didn't. You know, it was approved as a, I think, sixteen foot wide and it, I think T G Miller did go out there and. Uh evaluate the substrate, but yeah, obviously, eight years later, it's probably degraded a bit.
I don't think it was ever approved.
I think T G Miller went out there once to.
But I don't think they had to, because they were solar.
It was, it was, it was all on agricultural use.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty much, because I have photos of the, of that road when it was cross that, there was actually water was going across to the, that road. And it was that what, the top of the, the water was the same level all the way across, it was interesting, now and now it's built up about a foot, so they. It's some, yeah.
It's a better road now, I don't know.
It's a, it's a solid road.
We'll talk to T G Miller and just see if they have any records of it as well and just, like I said, open up communication with what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a problem with the, it was just more of kind of like looking at our zoning and.
Sure.
All the different regulations, how to kind of assess, to like the different changes and stuff, that's what I just have questions on.
Hmm. Yeah.
It's like if the private road goes in, then there's more use for, I mean, maybe if you try an industrial park or something like that.
It's up by the bed, yeah. The only thing they got the fall zone for the cell tower. Whatever, I don't, what's that, two hundred feet?
The falls on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and to Ron's point, I mean, I'm glad you're trying to do a business in Dryden, that's, that's all good, but we have, you know, we, we have these. Things we have to deal with, right, that are.
Yeah. Um. Well, Tony, I I I'll comment on that, I I think that this board is very, very welcoming to local business and we do our best to work with folks. To troubleshoot with them and figure things out. It's not helpful when a business comes in and ignores our local laws and starts a business in violation of our laws. So that, that's not very welcoming of you and the way you behave towards us.
And I totally understand that, and uh I guess the whole point was when. When I started this, I was not aware of any of this originally, because in all my years of running a business, um I always. Um leased already established um facilities. That either had a repair facility in the past or some other business already in there, so I've never dealt with this before. This is the first, well, second time, I'm in front of a town meeting, last time was last week.
Last week was the town board?
Yeah, 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 first time ever attending, so um I spoke to some people, I met um. You guys and I met you and I met uh Dave and everybody and you. The throughout the whole process, I've been slowly getting educated on what is need to be done. So this, this is my priority right now, I'm trying to get on top of it.
No, to scare you. You live, you live in Dryden?
Yeah, unlikely.
You want to be on a board?
Only three time, absolutely.
Alright, uh.
I appreciate John's comment, because I'm sitting here, and I was gonna ask, is this unusual situation where. The horse is already out of the barn.
Right.
And I'm assuming it is an unusual situation.
It's not supposed to happen, but.
You know, it's supposed to. And how did it come to anybody's attention that needed to be addressed?
I believe there was a complaint filed with the town and then enforcement individuals came out and paid a visit. So and then they explained laws to this gentleman here and then he ended up finding me.
Yeah, I, as soon as I uh, somebody stopped in and come filed a complaint, I came here and uh I think I. Met you first, Dave and you know, and then uh. Sit down, had a conversation, I explained what I'm doing, where I'm coming from and what I want to do um. And uh this is how the ball started to roll and took a while. Uh I'm not really, really good with management of time, but you know, I'm trying to do my best to get in front of everything. Not having to deal with any of this.
Two more questions for you.
Yes.
One regarding a sign, you gonna put a sign out?
Um yes, and I haven't done it yet because I was worried that it's gonna be an issue, so I wanted to make sure.
Laws.
Yeah.
Be what?
Laws, sign laws.
There, there is a sign.
He was concerned.
So one of the biggest problems I have is when somebody schedules an appointment, they can't find me.
Right.
So it's twenty one fifty takes you the back of Johnson Road where there's also used to be a.
Right.
An entrance.
So that, so that you should ask, you might get another uh address too. Because you could have, that whole area could be, if you did a private road, it could be named a different road and with a different address, right?
Hmm, yeah.
So, so that's a plus for a private road, so.
I I.
So signs, see, if you come up with a sign, it should be on your cycle and, you know, and just a simple drawing, what do you think? Biggest thing is get it, keep it off the road for visibility, when you're trying to leave the property.
Keep it off the road?
It can't be right up near the road, so it blocks people's view.
Oh, absolutely, um.
And and when greens, when uh R P M was there, there was a fatality leaving that site.
A fatality?
Yeah, somebody got, so just be aware that that's a busy road.
Yeah, that that road is is pretty busy and I always tell people, you know, just make sure, don't park on the side of the road. Don't do anything, just turn it, um there used to be a sign at some point when there was an auction, I believe, when they were auctioning off something.
Oh, the, the greenhouses, yeah.
Now, the, and and the the original tree business there had had a sign out.
Yeah, they're still there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that white sign on the side of the road um is there currently, and I haven't done anything with it because I wasn't sure what the laws are about. So I kind of just waited until.
Yeah, there's requirements on sides and setback and and type, you know, height and all that stuff, so it's um. Just needs to maintain those things and not block views, especially at that intersection, you know, that that road coming out. You make, want to make sure it's not doing anything to block.
Okay, it's the, the driveway's up there because of the vis- visibility.
Right, that's why the driveway goes up to where it does.
It's nice surround.
Yeah, if it had come in to the road further down, it would have been right at the bottom of that hill, it would have been really hard to see both directions.
Yeah, luckily there you can see from the.
That's right.
Dermatology place, yeah, because the right where it just starts.
Being at the top of the hill where it is, you can really, you have much better visibility in both directions, yeah. Yeah, I think that's also why they put the driveway across from it in that spot, because it's, it's easier to see both. Directions being right at the sort of crest of that.
Yeah, from the driveway, you can see um Scotty's garage, and then you can see the top of the dermatology place, a little bit further up there where the like. The parcel is being sold, I guess.
So Tony, are we done with this? That we'll have recommendations for the town board to consider?
Yeah, because I, I, because there's some things you need to come back with, right?
Correct, yeah, we, like I said, we need to get a design, deal with the fire apparatus access, uh you know, there's.
I.
I have a a list here.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I I I would have the recommendation that it, that would comes back to us for review before it goes to the town board. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they're gonna want to, yeah, when, when is the.
Uh it's maybe fifteenth, but they can have that public hearing.
Public hearing.
Take in public comment, not make a decision that night, wait for the May planning board meeting.
Right.
Finalize recommendations and actually act on it at the June meeting.
June, right. I know this drags out, I know, I get it.
Well, it also takes time to organize other.
Yeah.
Other entities, so. So cheers, can the town board approve that contingent of us approving it at the next meeting?
I, I wouldn't do it that way, but no, but they can, they can hear public comment. But they can get all the comments, I think that's, yeah, that's fine.
I got a suggestion when you do your sign, put clearly by appointment only. That way you do, you know, don't have traffic, just people just coming down.
And the hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, hours of operation.
I started tenth of a late.
I think we put.
Six.
Yeah, I think we put in eight to six.
Eight to six, okay.
He said he wouldn't get up at eight typically, but I said, you never know, every now and then you might.
People like pull in there and drop off cars before you get there?
If I, if I allow, yes.
Right.
So if somebody says, hey, I'm getting out of work at seven, I can I bring a two by eight?
Yeah.
And then if I'm in the area and available, I'll usually meet him if not, and also I'm. Uh, uh, local uh, records, like. They, Ron's for example, they know where I'm at.
Right.
I, I keep relationship with a lot of local shops, a lot of uh, uh, local tow companies and just networking.
So would you, would you consider yourself a salvage yard?
Oh, no, I would.
You're a repair, you're a repair, okay.
Yeah, repair only.
Okay, so uh, Marty's familiar with section eleven oh three and eleven four, so. I mean, that's our checklist for site plan review requirements and, you know, some of them weren't, wouldn't, wouldn't apply to you, but if you could answer those questions. For a formal site plan review.
Okay.
That would be.
We incorporate a lot of them in here as well.
I think you have.
Yeah.
There's some things like lighting.
Right.
You know, you need to deal with, you know, everything should be down light, night sky compliant.
Yep, I say, I uh, did a couple lights, the existing lights were outdated and they were using.
Yeah.
A high, like this old school halogen high watt hour.
Right, right.
Bulb, so I uh, got rid of it and put um, efficient LEDs. Just to kind of keep everything and everything is motion detected, so at nighttime when nobody's there, they're not activated unless somebody walks by or something.
Or a gear goes through.
Yeah, I have a, I have a camera hooked up, so if some call happens that, you know, I'm aware.
They got wifi back there.
Uh?
You got wifi back there.
The cell, cell tower.
Yeah.
No wifi, just cellular.
Yeah, I use Verizon to use their um, you know, hot robot as a, which is nice cuz I'm so close to it, so the, you know, speed is really great. Except for today.
Alright, so some things to do.
Yeah, we have a nice list together. We'll be in contact with uh, some of the professionals that we're looking at and see what they can do as far as timeline, so. We hope to be back at the May meeting. We'll stay in contact with Ray and Gina, obviously, about our timeframe, so.
And there's no other questions from the board, right? Are you, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, are, are, are we putting together our own list so that we're all on the same page?
We can go over it if you want. You wanna put it on record?
I mean, I have private road, I have fire, which kind of correlates. Uh, I have drilled well, easy wetlands. I have SUP for solar farm modification, lock gate that needs to be corrected. I have also pipe in the Willow Glen Creek, uh, which is connected back to the SUP associated with the uh, modification. I also have a burn identified uh, for leaking of oils and signage. That's what I have.
Okay, and then.
The, the private drive will have the, the um, the pullovers that the fire department wants to see is asking for, so.
It would be a fire department compliant.
That, that's on, I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you.
I imagine we're gonna propose in between a twenty to twenty-six foot wide road, uh, or access with that, I mean, you're talking. You know, typically, your typical travel lane is ten feet wide, so you have plenty of room for access and, and areas. Uh, you know, cha- appendix, the uh, fire code requires twenty or twenty, twenty-six feet depending on the distance. Uh, mainly to have access around emergency vehicles that are pulled over to be able to. Uh, bypass them and get to other areas.
Right, and some of the roads that are in there could be your pull offs, right?
Hmm, yeah, that's.
So you've got those. So whoever calls the solar, they, if they're o- okay with the gate at the street open, they may want. To close down the gates at the private road, to add gates to private road, so people aren't in the back. Behind the cemetery or crossing Willow Creek, if that pipe gets pulled. Does that make sense? Just a simple, just a simple pole or something to close it off? I don't, those are the, you look back, it doesn't matter cuz there's a turnaround up there.
Yeah, there's turnaround in the back.
But those two behind the cemetery and the other one, they might want to close that, or we might wanna close it off.
Yeah, and there's a lot of infrastructure to protect there. So Ron, are you gonna be making contact to your two lessees or do you want the town?
Yes, I will, yeah, I'll contact the solar and cell.
So we want an affirmative statement from them that they will modify their SUPs appropriately to accommodate.
Okay, alright.
And you think it's appropriate to ask for the, those two roads closed or gated? Getting access to those two facilities, probably is.
First two sites, yeah, if they're not gated.
Yeah, probably is.
I think all of them want.
Well, not the two, one, the one that goes to the, behind the cemetery isn't, that goes back a long ways, and then the one that goes. This one, this one's not, but you, but it's gated back here. Gated here, but you want people to.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying there should be something.
And then the other one's back on this one.
Yeah.
But it'd be two. Those these don't really.
Yeah, these don't matter back to.
They can't cross them, but they're gated here, right?
You're talking about the first two sites coming off of uh, Route thirteen?
Yeah, after you come off thirteen, there's, there's one that goes behind the cemetery and it, and it goes quite a ways in before it gets to a gate.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, maybe there should be something up close to the road, just a pole, up, up close to the private road. So that they, you know, so that people don't go back in, you know, don't accidentally.
Right, cuz it uh, I think it, it hangs off to the left.
Yeah, 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 to the left, and then there's one to the right further in.
Oh. Right, and there's one to the.
Just something, so, yeah, just something simple so that they, I would think that the solar people would want that so that there aren't people going. And, and they might, it'd be interesting to see what they say.
Yeah, there's a one section where uh, is it good for pull off because it's kind of a cut down area where car can.
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could leave that, yeah, just put the, put it back twenty feet or so, yeah, that the fire access could use that too.
Yeah, cuz we, we had a um, issue once la- last summer where um, the guy could bring the sheep in. He brought his trailer and truck and I was coming in, he was coming out, so we just, you know.
Yeah.
Went past and stuff.
Yep. Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time. Pleasure. Nice to meet you guys.
Marty.
Thank you.
A lot.
Uh, so I don't see nine thirty-three Dryden Road here yet again, so we're going to Snyder Hill Road?
Yeah, so John Finley is the owner up there. And uh, so this site will look familiar to you.
I was gonna say, we just looked at this, didn't we?
Yeah.
Did it, yeah, last year.
Yeah.
Um, I actually have larger, I don't know if you guys want any paper stuff or if you just wanna look, look on, on your screens.
I'm fine, I don't have anybody else here.
Yep, we've seen it.
Yep.
So this is um, the history on this is that the original parcel that was there in twenty twelve. Our subdivision law was promulgated, uh, has been subdivided now four times. And now subdividing this lot into two, it becomes the fifth lot and therefore it becomes a major subdivision. So that's why it's before this board. So, you know, we don't have a lot of the issues of a normal major subdivision, there's no, you know, pipe going in, there's no uh, sidewalks there. There's no uh, stormwater plan, so it, it really appears like a minor subdivision, but we're putting it through the major subdivision process. Uh, so this is technically the sketch plan review, even though he's gone and gotten a full. Uh, survey from TG Miller. Uh, this is a sketch to see if the town board uh, approves of this concept. This is a little different from the last sketch that you saw on that the last time, uh, we were just showing a. The ability to conceptually subdivide the lot in two, in that there was enough frontage for a standard lot of two fifty and a flag lot of twenty-five. And then there was enough acres left over to have one acre per parcel. And the conceptual subdivision line went up, you know, starting fifty foot wide at the road, going in a little bit. Then jogging over and kind of doing a stair step up for a flag lot. So this is being proposed as a uh, more typical dividing the lot in half, dividing the frontage in half. So it would necessitate a area variance on the road frontage, because neither of them are standard. Uh, one lot has. Oh, the numbers right, oh, here we go. Uh, one lot has a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, the other lot has a hundred and twenty-four feet of frontage. So this need for variance is driven by just not wanting to do that funny flag lot. That could, could accomplish it, but you know, would, wouldn't be intuitive. For people to view the lot.
Ray, I don't have a problem with this, but I have to say I didn't follow your logic.
Yeah, it's just, is, is this the configuration that the board would ideally like to see? And therefore you'd be recommending to, that the ZBA grant this variance. The other alternative is to just do a flag lot and uh, then it wouldn't require going to the ZBA. But it would be a kind of odd looking lot line.
And, and I've, I've made this point a couple of times in the last six months or so, uh, relative to our. Uh, zoning project, one of C P E A's comments uh, regarding front footages. Was that Nan pointed out that she thought that um, in the residential zone, she thought that they were excessive, that she said. That the hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty foot of front footage seemed quite excessive, I think was her point. That it's, it's our intent to uh, encourage of more diversity in housing types and things like that than in places where we would like to see higher density. That those be reduced, and this is on the agenda for a meeting a week from today, to uh, talk specifically about, you know. What, what should those reductions be and I, and we'll ask Nan to talk about that.
Um, I will say that uh, eight twenty and eight twenty-eight, which are. There's only one house between me and those two ad- those two addresses are next door to each other. And they have about a hundred feet, a hundred, hundred and ten feet, um, so it's not gonna. Say like change the look of the neighborhood, you know, I'm, I'm not taking a, you know, where everybody has huge frontage and trying to. You know, make a bunch of stuff with small frontage, it, it kind of goes along with what's already there.
Yes.
Tony?
Uh, go ahead, Brad.
So just a, a few observations on this, I mean, it's a nice clean, you know, professionally drawn survey. Um, I see one leach field, I don't see a second one. I see a, a house under construction, why are we talking about subdivision when a house is already under construction? That's curious to me. Um, and then there's, I'm just, I don't know what the thinking was in creating this configuration. But it's, to me, it strikes me as odd only that, that there's this deep, you know, dog leg back, it's not really a flag lot. It's like an inverse flag lot, and what, what's the purpose for that hundred and twelve foot deep? Um, p- piece of land that belongs to parcel B behind parcel A. These are just questions I have in my, my mind when I'm looking at the map. And then a very minor thing, and maybe it's just uh, just the way that the mail system works, but on the uh, general permit application, it shows. Uh, Ithaca, New York, but you know, I'm, I'm sure it's in Dryden, I was just, that was just some.
On a dry with an Ithaca address.
Correct.
So, so I'm just curious about some of the, 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 the parts there and, and you know, I, it's not necessarily in our. Purview to be reviewing leach field locations and such, but I just see one, I don't see two. Um, anyway, just stuff I'm thinking about when I see, and the house under construction caught my eye, it's like, okay.
And so thi- this was reviewed last year, Brad, uh, okay. And there was a, there was a second house being put on the lot and, and that it had to be subdivisible, but it originally wasn't intending to subdivide.
Okay.
To subdivide, and, and so that's how the house got started. And now he's coming back to, actually, he, he now actually wants to subdivide because so. The existing house, the existing house is where you live now, right?
I, I live, uh, no, I haven't, I haven't had my final inspection. But, but the house were used on, on this particular.
Parcel A?
Parcel B, I live in, in parcel A.
Right.
Parcel B is three weeks, I'm, I'm.
You, you, you were literally living in parcel A, you're putting the second house on, you're gonna move into parcel B.
Right.
So it's still, that's yours.
Correct.
And, and now you wanna subdivide out the piece that had parcel A.
Correct.
Cuz you wanna sell it.
Correct.
Got it, yeah, and, and the, the difference, Brad, is he, originally when he did this. He was just planning on putting a second house there, not actually subdividing it and selling it.
Correct.
Okay, I, I vaguely recall this, this, seeing this last year, but, so that makes sense.
Which is why it ended up being a weird flag lot, because there wasn't really an intent to, to actually subdivide.
I can, I can actually explain just quickly, the reason. Why there's this odd hundred and twelve foot wing on the back, other than, other than the flag left. Portion of it, is that that is a cleared area, um, that is not wet. Where, um, where it says parcel B down there, that land is. Kind of like an undesignedated wetland, wetland, but you know, has water in it sometimes, but not other times, so it's, it's not really usable. And the um, to the, to the um. I guess down from the driveway is where the leach field is, um, I got a uh. I don't know, oh, here we go, here's uh, it has, I think on page two is the.
The health department for the, so, so the second leach field is actually to the.
Is right there.
Sound of the driveway.
Exactly, and then they wanted this future replacement plan.
Yeah.
Which all of a sudden, when you go back to the original flag lot idea of having two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. It goes into that, into that area, um, so. It, um, and everything, the sand filter was the closest they wanted to um, bring it. Uh, towards the, I guess it would be the east of the, or the south of the property.
Right.
Um, because of that land was, is somewhat, somewhat wet, or at least wet in the, in the springtime, so, um. And so in order to give the new house an actual area of to, you know, recreate, recreate, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Anything, that's why I left that hundred and twelve feet, this was hours of talking to TG Miller, seeing. You know, look at this, let's see what we can actually do to give both properties a decent amount of area. You know, whether it's gardening or, you know, whatever.
Gotcha. Yeah, um.
I know it's odd.
Are, are there any issues with setbacks, Ray? I mean, the driveway can go on the side of the.
Correct.
Property line there, right? And the house is far enough back from the side property line? Yeah, I don't have an issue with this. So, we can approve the sketch plan.
Yep, and now we have to schedule a hearing for the preliminary plat. Um, if you wanna see any changes, you know, I suppose you wanna see the septic on this preliminary plat.
Yes, it would be good to see the septic, yeah.
Uh, any other changes you wanna see before this becomes next month's submission?
We're gonna make you come back, man.
Well, we wouldn't approve this unless the variance got approved, right?
What, I was thinking you would approve it contin-.
Or a contingent.
Contingent on the variance, then the ZBA could act on it between preliminary plat and final plat.
Right.
Right.
So we need a recommendation to the ZBA, right? But that would be next month, we would do the recommend.
The recommendation now, so I would declare yourselves lead agency and that way they can, at their next meeting. At their May meeting, they can concur with the lead agency and the June meeting, they can act on your recommendation.
Okay, and this doesn't need to go to the town board, we, we become the lead, we just need to get the area variance, okay?
Yep.
So, um, I just declare that we're the leader agency, right?
Yeah, for purposes of a coordinated review.
For purposes of coordinating review.
And you might do that by resolution.
Oh, so I propose a resolution that we declare ourselves, the plant, the planning board as lead agency. Oh, so I propose a resolution that we declare ourselves, the plant, the planning board as lead agency for the purposes of coordinating review. I make that motion.
Back in.
Any just, any, uh, Frank seconded, any, um, discussion? No, all in favor? All right, okay. Um, okay, so we are lead agency, as far as that's concerned.
I'll note about ZBA and due formality of their
So are we gonna do the recommendation to the planning or to the ZBA tonight? So the motion for that is that we we make a motion recommending to the ZBA that they approve, this is an area variance, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we approve the frontage area variance based on the survey. Because it fits with the neighborhood, it doesn't
Conform with others.
Yep, it conforms with other lots in the area and is consistent with the neighborhood.
Yep, right.
That's the motion. Second. Craig seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, okay? Uh, and that's all we can do tonight, right? Because the, the, they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come back for the full plat.
Right, so John will bring a preliminary plat back and it's just that modification of putting the septic on there. And we'll put a
The well is there. Right, the well is there, the well's there. This well's there, that septic is there, the driveway is, yeah, I think that's the only thing that's missing is the is the second septic system.
So I'll put a notice out there for a public hearing here next month at the fourth Thursday, and we'll all meet again.
Okay. Sounds good.
Is there anything I need to do with the Board of Appeals, or is that something that you asked first and then I do it?
I'm getting that application in. And that'll be in the June, the first Tuesday of June is when they will hear it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good, thank you. Want to sit on this one? You did a good job with it. Yours, you could, yeah, do Barn Auto. Um, so nine thirty-three, are we not gonna do that tonight, or?
Um, I'm kind of miffed because we just, they were here at the planning board, uh, last Thursday night, we talked about, yeah. That's town board, yeah.
So what are they, what are they looking for?
This would just be the final site plan. Um, because you've done the secret already, you've made your recommendation to the town board. Town board acted on that recommendation.
So we just have to give this our last thing and then
Gives the final, because he did revise the drawing a couple of times over the last month. To your last months.
Seems like they've captured a lot of the stuff we talked about.
They have, yeah. That should be nice and I guess we could be. Let's say we're looking at it yet again. Uh, and I'm assuming that the town board approved?
They did, they approved it contingent on your final site plan approval, and they also put the condition in there about the two lots remaining in the same ownership.
Yep, they did put that provision in there.
Yes, okay.
Yep. Yep, we wanted that provision that they have to remain same ownership, right?
Did they ever get any response from the highway department, the highway?
No.
So that's shown, but
Yeah, but we don't know if that's gonna actually end up being there.
That doesn't change the binding.
No, it doesn't change anything for us. Yeah, and, and that's the direction of travel they're using now, right?
Yeah.
So
We think it's safer.
Okay. Well, it looks like they did everything that we asked them to do. So, resolution recommending that we we approve, we approve the site plans. The site plan, recommending the town board approve the site. So they already did. They're, they're
They just had their S U P, was their small piece of it. You guys are the primary
We, we just need to approve the site plan.
Yeah.
And, and they're done, right? Um, gotta go back to the town board.
No, they need, they need their variance still, so they
They need their variance.
Six is their
Yeah.
Big date.
And we, and we made that recommendation to the, we made the recommendation to the town board, made the recommendation to the zoning, ZBA. So we just need to approve the site. We don't, we don't need the recommendation for this. For the site. Right, we just need to approve the site. Just approve it. Well.
Yeah, and then you could just reiterate the condition that the ownership stays the same with the two parcels.
Uh, so the resolution is that we approve this site plan, this final site plan. Uh, the condition that was put on the S U P is that the two lots, lot A and B, remain under same ownership because lot B is used as open space for the lot coverage.
And then it continue to function that way, that they can't put a house on it or something.
Correct, it has to continue as an open space. Uh, correct. Uh, any other things we need to put on this? I think that's it, right?
We had to be born.
Yep. Okay, uh, so that's the motion is to approve this.
What's the last, the date of this?
Uh, this is the this was the plan that has a date of four seventeen, oh wait, this is four seventeen, is that twenty-five or twenty-six?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
All right. It was a little small, it was a little blurry, I couldn't tell. Yeah, so this is four seventeen, this is the, the site planned dated four seventeen, twenty-six, twenty-five, sorry.
Yep.
We're living in the future.
And actually, since this, the various revisions of the site plan that we've seen, it's always been a different calculation of green space numbers.
Right.
So some of the older ones looked at as a combined lot, the two of them, you know, one point two two acres.
Yeah.
Now, this final one that you're approving is actually treating lot A that is deficient, if you look at the calculus there, by twelve percent in their green space, and it's asking for the relief
Yeah.
uh, of that twelve percent. And so it might be worth in your resolution reaffirming that this site plan is what you're recommending the ZBA grant relief based on this final site plan.
Yes, final site.
As they've seen prior numbers, you know, when there's different calculations, combining lots, we're really just focused on this one lot. And the northern lot is being used as kind of the mitigating factor.
Right. So the resolution is that we approve this site plan contingent that the two lots remain under the same ownership. And we're also recommending that the ZBA grant relief uh, for the green space, uh, shortage.
As portrayed on this site plan.
Based on this site plan dated four seventeen twenty-five.
And really our approval should be contingent on that, because if they don't, um, right, they say it doesn't work.
Right. Yep, contingent on the ZBA approving it. But we're recommending that they approve it, but, but our approval doesn't matter if they don't approve it.
Right.
Right, so, okay. So that's the resolution.
I'll second.
Chris seconds, any other discussion on this? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Uh, that's unanimous. Okay, so we got through that one. All right, uh, zoning rewrite. Uh, so two things I wanted to, uh, just quickly cover tonight is uh, John, uh, created a draft data center resolution, so we should look at that. Uh, it was sent to everybody. And the other thing I want to do is just make sure everybody's, the, the, I, I just want, it's really between John and I, I guess, is we just want to make sure that the agenda for the upcoming, for next week's, um, meeting is all set.
May first.
But yeah, it's May first is the next meeting. But so let's, let's look at the draft resolution, does everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody look at it? Anybody have any comments on it?
No.
Everything we discussed in the last meeting.
So that's a recommendation.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so this is, the, the, what we're doing here is, this is a draft resolution to the town board recommending what they do to update our zoning for, uh, data centers. You want to talk about it at all, John?
Uh, very briefly, uh, one thing that I changed from the discussion we had at the zoning meeting last time, last time I, I said that we would allow one up to five thousand gross square feet data center in each of the two light industrial districts, and Nan pointed out that there's only one light industrial districts, and it happens to be in different places in town. And, and I've tried to think about how I can word that, and I don't know enough about the terms of art in zoning, so I found like throwing the towel on that, and I said, we'll put one in the L I A district, and one in the L I district.
That's it. You got it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for putting this together, John. Just wanna put out a word of thanks.
Uh, you're welcome. Yeah, the, uh, whereas piece got rather lengthy, I kept going through my notes and writing down things that people had said, we've talked about this a lot. And by the time I got done, it took up the whole page.
Well, but I think it needs to, you know.
There's the whole, everything that was recommended.
Yeah, I really tried to capture everybody's thoughts on this.
Um, just one question, or a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on number on number three under the, uh, the therefore part.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that applications for data centers use the S U P process and must demonstrate that they serve local business needs. How are they gonna demonstrate that they serve local business needs? I'm just not clear on that. I mean, because in our world, um, you know, a data center can be can be communicating with, uh, you know, um, New Delhi, you know, it's just, I don't, how does, how does that, how does that how is that known or demonstrating? I'm not clear on that, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, one problem I've had with our S U P process is that our regulations don't talk about the criteria in any great length on what the town board should use as they evaluate that proposal for a special use permit, and I think we need to do better at that. So that was my attempt to put a piece of criteria in there. So an example would be if, um, Dryden Mutual Insurance Company said that, uh, we don't have enough room on our facility to put, uh, uh, data center equipment that we want to own that is sufficient to meet the needs of our insurance company. And that it's critical to our operation, it just doesn't fit on our spot in the village of Dryden, and we'd like to put it over on the uh, L I district. So that would be an example of a clear demonstration of a local business coming forward with an application.
But I suppose it looking down the road ten, twenty years or whatever, that, that they could sell it, or it could be, you know, a, you know, a real estate asset that has value that, that they no longer are using, and it could be, become something else. I don't know if that's something we need to be concerned with or not, I'm just
Once they get their approval, uh, it's pretty odd for us to, uh, yeah.
That's why, that's why I bring it up.
And there's lots of examples like that. Uh, we're not in a good position to, uh, do much after the approval.
My, you know, my major concern about this, and, and I'm with others, I think Spring noted, to thank you for putting this together, and, um, you know, it's, 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 it's work. So hats off to you for putting the thought into this. Um, you know, I, I, my thinking goes back to, you know, uh, you know, crypto mining and, and how these, um, facilities are just massive power sinkholes. And don't do any favors for a local community in terms of drawing that, all that electricity and, 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 you know, we've all read or seen news uh, items about how the, the, the growth of this is, is going to really take off and start to consume really outsized proportion of, of energy and just almost outstrip the, um, um, the, the production of, of power plants and, you know, renewable energy or otherwise. So I'm, I'm still really kind of dead set against crypto, these data mining. So I mean, we're kind of normalizing it here. And maybe that's, maybe that's just what we do, I don't know. But it's, it's, it's not a pretty picture.
Yeah, wishy washy on the first page about that. I offered the opinion that, uh, it's not clear that either AI or crypto mining would meet the needs of a local business. But I did flat out say that, and it shouldn't be approved.
Right. And, and part of the challenge here is that AI hardware and crypto mining hardware are exactly the same.
But, um, you know, it certainly, if the board would like to take a more definitive position on that and say we recommend that it never be approved, that's up to you guys.
Aye, that is true.
That's where I go.
Well, I think we're talking to town board.
Yeah.
That that would be our recommendation to town board, right? So it's up to you guys, how you want to handle it.
I think we just throw it to them, they'll look at it.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I pumped it, I think, I think we'd do good doing that. So, so, so does anybody want to change anything on this resolution?
No.
Everybody's good with the resolution as it sits?
Yep.
Can I, can I ask a, a question?
Sure.
Um, when you send it to the town board, and sorry, this is me still learning. When you send it to the town board as a resolution, because of the comments you're making, and maybe this is a question for Ray, do you ever send a resolution to the town board saying, you know, if it is to be approved, this is what we recommend? But it doesn't mean that we're like necessarily fully, you know, decided that we fully support. I don't know if, if that matters or, or not.
It's our recommendation. This is our recommendation. What's in this resolution is our recommendation.
Yeah, you, you can disagree with it, that's fine.
And, and we, and some of us personally have reservations, I think, that have been expressed, but, but this, what you're, what you see in this resolution is our recommendation.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure I was fully clear, so thank you.
And then, you know, the town board can choose to accept and modify and
And they will.
And they will, and do whatever they want with it, right? So this is our recommendation. All right, I move that we
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, John, do you want to move that we
Sure, I'll move it.
Okay.
Uh, issue this recommendation.
Issue this recommendation as written.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
You second it.
I'll second it. Uh, any other discussion on this?
I'm Tony?
Yep.
I'm gonna be a no vote on this because I think it's, I just have to take a symbolic stand, you know, I, I understand, I get that there's dynamics with the town board and such. But I, I feel me, uh, personally about this, that it's, I can't in my good conscience, uh, you know, and, and, uh, but anyway, it's not a discussion, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Brad. Okay, all in favor?
No.
We got two notes. Opposed? Okay, so and Bill opposed. Uh, Frank, John, Chris, Craig, and myself, Tony, uh, voted yes uh, for this resolution. Okay? And, and very good discussion, John, thanks for putting this together.
Yeah.
Yep, I think, you know, this is a, this is an interesting, interesting topic.
Um, that's not diminished at all.
Uh, Agenda for next week.
Ray, do you want me to send the dot, dot file to you?
Yeah, please.
Wouldn't that be better than PDF?
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, so agenda, you know, we're, we're working on phase one, uh, review the four, three minutes. Uh, clarification of whether or not building projections, E G decks, et cetera, are allowed into setback areas. Uh, in general, we accept the highlighted recommendations on page nine, and they're listed here. Um, I think, I, there's a whole bunch of stuff here. I, I don't know if I want to read it all, because I don't think you guys have seen this, but
I think we, we left off right at
Yeah.
I, I wrote up the draft to Jen and send it, uh, to Tony Ray and Nan a couple of days ago, and it's ready, I think, to go out.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can send it out. I, I don't see any reason to not send it out. It looks, it looks good to me.
Yeah, so we, we make a big transition in the meeting. Now, this is all about housing. And there's decisions to be made, I think, to give, uh, Nan guidance, the one we talked about earlier on front footage requirements. You know, she, she said, I think they're too big, and it'd be nice if we could nail that down a little bit more specifically and uh, and again, uh, these are examples of things that, that go in front of the town board, where they're saying, yes, we support the Where they're saying, yes, we support this and manage to put that into language.
Okay.
And there's a lot of examples like that.
Do you want me to send, I can send this out like soon as we're done here.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yep, yep.
Alright, so we'll send that out. So we have an agenda for next week, because it's May first. My, my agenda for this meeting uh does not have the correct future dates on it, I just noticed. We'll correct those later. Uh, okay, um, planning department update.
Okay, um, a few things, you've got my monthly update that I send out just before the town board meetings. Uh, a few things I'll just call out from there are that we do have the flood damage prevention law that's set to be a public hearing and adopted at the May town board meeting. This is all just the culmination of the FEMA new mapping effort. So the new forms are out. We have to adopt them officially in our in our law, and we've also taken some additional optional steps that D E C put in there into, into their model law. So we're just uh with the expanded flood plain, we have some expanded rules. Uh, a few things related to the Dryden Rail Trail are, we finally got go ahead from D O T to advertise for bids. So we're gonna have a bid opening here for the Route thirteen bridge, uh, bid opening here on May eighth. And then hopefully we'll have a successful uh bid there. Also doing a small feasibility study on the Edna stretch. That's the last remaining stretch between Route thirteen and the village of Freeville. Uh, because we have some problematic properties there trying to get through the, the final route. We only have like forty-two out of forty-eight easements uh needed for the entire route. So we're looking at some potential rerouting. Uh, and then lastly, there's a Cornell group that's working on a fix for the Niceig washout. This is the Niceig property that's east of Pinkney Road, about fifteen hundred feet in. And uh, they've actually been, you know, it's cooperative engineering class and other students doing a great design, and they've actually got some Cornell money towards materials. So they will be in initiating some of the repair and our town forces, D P W will be completing it. So that should be solved here in the next few months. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Any questions for Ray?
It's Ju, it's June and something that the FEMA new maps become final, right?
Yeah, June eighteenth or nineteenth is the
Yeah, so this is just the approval for, kind of like all the other places they're doing to make sure that if you approve it, that they qualify for what insurance.
Yeah, yeah, this is all so people can get insurance.
Uh, that's good. Town board update.
Um, I think the two main things, um, uh, Ray covers so much, um is, uh, we're still working through changes with um the fire departments. Um, the other main thing that's uh going on, in case you guys hear about it, is um uh, now that we have uh brought on board a much more robust um, company to help us complete the uh Dryden and Caroline uh fiber project, uh, they are identifying some things that uh the smaller company uh could have done better. Uh, so to speak. So uh, there's, there's a short delay in, uh, they're taking a pause to make sure that they've got everything uh, just exactly so before uh moving forward with uh massive and fast uh expansions. Um, so I don't know if anyone has questions on that, but um if you, if you hear about that or see that, I want to make sure you guys are looped in.
Yeah, that pause was put in place right in the middle of them doing our road.
I'm sorry. So, uh, but there, they'll be back at it as quickly as possible. Um, but again, taking a pause to make sure that everything is, is just exactly right. Um, uh, it's the again, moving to a much bigger company with, with much more resources and and looking at this in a much more uh, robust way with, with their engineering department.
Yeah, and I actually spent some time with Dave and uh some people from Vantage uh this week. Um, I think, you know, I think this company really is a better move.
Yep, so I wholeheartedly agree. Um, there's just, there's always a little bit of growing. Put it mildly in the transition.
Uh, so it's, you know, the, it's, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get them, you know, to get things going again, but
Yeah, I've seen their trucks.
Yeah, the Vantage trucks. Yeah, so if you see these Vantage vehicles driving around, that's, that's what they're doing.
Waiting for.
I know, I know.
Me too. So, um, other than that, I don't, I don't know if you guys have any uh questions, but it was actually a fairly brief meetings uh this month. Um, and and a lot of what we discussed, Ray, Ray covered.
Yep, cool, good. Uh, any questions for Spring? No, okay.
I threw up one question for Ray. There's a crane down on Freeze Road. What's, what's that for?
No.
Huh?
There are several.
Yeah, is that for the Freeze Road Bridge?
Uh, I haven't gone out to bid yet.
The activity for the Freeze Road.
It's a big, it's a big crane. It's a big crane.
Okay. Yeah, they might be initiating work there.
Okay, cool.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And I will add one thing, you know, the Climate Smart Community Program, Alice Green has been the coordinator for years. She has resigned. Gina was appointed by the town board as the new Climate Smart Coordinator. Oh, for that group.
Is that good or bad?
Uh, for the record, I, I tried to get us to like refuse her resignation, but they, they said I couldn't do that.
Yeah, you can do that, yeah. Okay, well, congratulations. Yeah.
Ray, I have one question. The Pinkney Road right past the concrete plant there, there's like a growing and growing car storage area, and then now this resided, the building would have signed up. Is that, I never, I remember seeing that.
So the next lot north of the cement?
I mean, that house that's there, it's all sixty-eight. But they've kind of subdivided, so the house is being worked on, the Benson car area.
Okay.
I just haven't seen it.
I'll have uh Dave go by and see what's happening there. So it's like between the house and the driveway for the cement?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, uh, the conference debrief, I just wanted to touch base really quickly. There were five of us that went to the conference. Was it five?
Six.
Six, all uh of us that went to the um, New York State Planning Federation Conference. Um, unfortunately, I uh got a little ill, so I didn't get to everything I wanted to get to, but the uh, I got my hours. I did make it to the sessions. I tried to stay away from people, and I did make it to the training sessions, but I didn't make it to the reception at the um at the Hall of Fame, and I skipped lunch and those kind of things, just so I didn't get around a lot of people, but uh, any comments on the conferences, those that went? Did it, did you find it useful? Did you think it was good?
Yeah, I think uh this, Ray was in this session, the, the bit, the seeker session. I think we have a few things to look at, potentially changing kind of how we document our public record, defensible record. And um, I think Ray, Ray, you had a couple of questions for the presenter about the, kind of how the town or how the zoning laws are written for a few things too.
Yeah, about giving an administrative officer the lead agency role for minor subdivisions. And so he said, oh, that's interesting.
Not something we should be doing?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we've gotten, we've gotten attorneys to weigh in that, yes, this is in town law and and towns do have latitude to make town law, and even though there's not really an enabling statute in New York State town law that we can point to. Uh, there is the general New York State law that gives town boards the, the right to delegate powers relative to subdivisions. That's how they typically do it to a planning board.
Right.
We took the unusual step of taking the minor subdivisions and giving it to the planning department.
Right.
I don't know whether it's good or bad. We can change that in our rewrite, and we can make things, you know, less angst for everybody who's looking at, why are you such an outlier?
Right. And I think another one was not approving a seeker plan with any conditions. You just go through the seeker, either approve or deny. And then if they make their changes, then you can, you just do another, re, uh, do another seeker. Based on the new plans.
Based on the new set of conditions.
Set of conditions, yeah.
We do that very often, do we? Conditionally approve. Well, I mean, we conditionally approved it when we went to, to Z B A, but
Yeah, it's kind of this iterative process, but it doesn't technically have a great basis.
Right, right, okay. Uh, did uh people get their certificates at all?
I did not.
You did, yeah, and Craig hasn't. I did get mine, but I, they're probably working through it. I got mine a few days ago. It was, it was one email with one certificate with all of the sessions that you, you know, you're supposed to write your number down as you went into the sessions. So it was one certificate with all of the uh, so with the sessions I went to, I got seven point five hours or something. I think that's what most people should end up with. Uh, which is good, because it catches me up, because I was short of my four hours last year, so now
Me too.
Now I'm
You're good for this year.
I'm, I'm good for this year, so I, I think, I gotta check with Joy, but I think I'm, I think I'm good now. Um. So I, I, too, once, like, I thought, I thought it was very interesting and worth going to, so, um I thought the white elephant. Yeah, I was in that one. That, that was good, yeah. You know, environmental stewardship and the growth at any cost. I thought that was interesting, how, you know, whatever you build there is gonna be there forever. And that's why you're left with these structures that look like hell, you know, and, and they talked about Pizza Hut. Yeah. And how Pizza Hut, you know, you know it's a Pizza Hut. You can't do anything with it. Yeah, so, so even though it's not your, you, why approve it? It could be something else, you know, down the road when it, when Pizza Hut goes away again. You know, which I thought is interesting, a different mentality of thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also, I thought buzzwords, you know, little buzzwords, current words.
Yeah.
You know, micro mobility.
Yeah.
I thought that was cool. Um, allocate street, uh, relocate street parking. Create places for people rather than cars.
Right.
So that was interesting, you know, uh, so that, you know, it was a little buzzwords, I thought.
Placemaking.
Yeah, so eliminate parking and they put, and put a bike, because we're always talking about bike trails.
Yeah.
And bike access on the road. So eliminate the parking on the road. You know, then you just created a, you know, we got to get creative parking lot somewhere.
Right.
But I thought it was interesting. I thought it's a little catchphrases and buzzwords for, mostly for brains, you know, that's where my head was.
Yeah, and then they recommend, like, they, in those same sessions, they had used references from Europe that have kind of gone more back toward a uh a more pedestrian friendly kind of zoning concept, away from the car centric and that it took forty to fifty years of of like, so it does matter, like, what you put in place in your zoning changes and a comprehensive plan that it will down the road if make those effects that you want to see.
Yeah, I thought it was good. So the other thing I'll mention is, so anybody who still needs training or um still needs um hours, uh, Joy usually sent forwards out to the planning board when uh N Y P F uh, does, they do these learn, learn at lunch Zoom program, which I've done several of those. They're they're good, you know, it's a good way to get hours, right, if you need them. Uh, and there's other things going on as well, but but Joy usually sends those out when we get, when the town gets notified. Piggyback on that, the Department of State has training online.
Right.
And you can do them, they get an hour and you can do them in thirty-five minutes. I mean, they're, they're pretty quick, you know, and they're, you know, they'll print you a lot. They'll, you can print out a certificate and give it to Joy or email it.
Yep.
Um, there's a bunch of, I, I mean, I, I lived up, so what Department of New York Department of State, or, yeah, just look up for planning board training and you'll see different anything that, you know, from site plan review to special use.
N Y P F has some recorded sessions too that you can do.
Yeah, and you, you've got, they're interactive, so you gotta scroll. You just can't, and if you're working yeah, often do, put it on a different computer, because it'll recognize that you're do double duty.
Now, 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 let's not tell people how to get around these things.
Well, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, uh, and anything, anything we need to do, like, uh, people need to submit for reimbursement, right?
Right, we, um and we were dividing fifteen hundred four ways.
Right. So whatever that is, that's what it is, that's what
So the, it, the registration is already covered by the towns. That leaves, you know, a hundred and some odd dollars per, so if you submit a hotel receipt or something.
Right.
Um.
And and th- those get sent to who?
To Joy or me.
Is there a form or anything, or just you just send?
Uh, no, because you have, I have your approval.
I gave mine to Cassie, so.
Your, your receipts?
Yeah, there's the hotel receipt.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. He took it, because she said they got a new voucher for it.
Yeah. Okay.
So the town board has to sign a voucher.
Yep, but then usually goes through Joy, so I'll have Joy get it from Cassie.
Yeah, okay. She, she, she said she figured it out, so I didn't know how to give it to her.
Yeah, okay, sorry. So if anybody hasn't done that, uh, send the, send, send the stuff to you or to Joy.
Yeah.
Either one, okay. Well. Uh, I, I know I haven't sent anything in myself, so, uh, but yeah, we're, so we're pulling fifteen hundred four ways. Yep, okay, got it. Um, alright, so that's
or one out of four. But that's all I submitted, so.
Okay.
So whatever, if you want to do it, give them more, it could, don't matter. Okay. Yep. Alright, uh, last thing on the agenda. I don't think we need an executive session tonight. There's nothing we need to talk about there, right? Uh, last thing on the agenda is the minutes from the last two months. I did send them out with my agenda. Anybody have any comments on the, on the minutes that I sent out, the modified ones that I sent out?
Somebody did a lot of work for the modifications. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I had help. Um, the uh, uh so I'll just incorporate, so, uh, well, first of all, so for the February twenty-seventh, uh, do I have a, a, a motion to um approve the February twenty-seven minutes?
So, Luke?
Uh, John moves it, uh, Bill seconds. Uh, any other discussion on the February minutes? All in favor? Alright, that's unanimous. I don't know about, oh, did we lose Brad?
Brad left.
Oh, we lost, we lost Brad, okay. So it's everybody about Brad. Um, up first, uh, and then the same for the March twenty-seventh minutes, uh, oh, I did have one, I, I uh, hate to do this, I'm sorry. I did have one question on the February minutes. On the twenty-six Quarry Road. It says uh three oh nines, two lots. Applicant wishes to put two dwellings on one lot and area variances needed. Is that correct?
I'm trying to think of the case. This was, this was subdivisible.
This was, uh, yeah, buzzed off.
Yeah.
Uh, he's had it for thirty-five years, built a lot, uh, blah, blah, blah. He was, this is, yeah, he was doing the subdivision, but that's what he's doing, right? He's putting, he was putting two dwellings on one lot.
I thought three, actually.
Three, he was three something, right? Oh, it's, it's, the review is to see if, that, that was the, that was the weird thing. The review is to see if the lot can be subdivided into three lots.
Yeah.
It's three point three seven acres, so there's one acre per lot. That's three oh nine.
Yeah, we said there is enough space.
And then, and, and there's enough for a lot, standard lot and two flag lots. And then it says applicant wishes to put two dwellings on one lot. Hmm, that's not correct, right?
No, he wants three dwellings on one lot.
Three dwellings on one lot, but it just needs to be subdivitable, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's okay. So I'll correct that. So it's three dwellings on one lot. I, I thought this wasn't worded right. I just, okay, alright. Sorry, okay. Alright, I just want to make sure my thing was right. So anyway, we already approved it, so, so that changed. March twenty-seventh minutes, uh, I also modified those. Any, any questions on those? Anything you want to update on those? Uh Craig, you want to move that we approve the March twenty?
I'll do that, I'll move it.
Craig, Chris seconds. Nate, you do it.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion?
I moved some.
All in favor?
I was looking down there.
Uh, everybody who's here, which is everybody but Brad. Um, approves the minutes, and I think that's it for tonight. Uh, our next meeting is May our, our next zoning meeting is May first, which is next Thursday. The agenda for that is gonna go out right after this meeting. Uh, and the next regular planning board meeting is May
Twenty-second.
Twenty Isn't it twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second, I think.
The twenty-second? What is this calendar doing? Oh, that's today. That's, that's the way this calendar split. I'm looking at twenty-fourth.
Yeah, twenty-second.
Yeah. May twenty-second. Alright, so May first and May twenty-second, yes.
I'm just saying, I, I pulled up the D E C wetlands, and it looks like that one, that property with the garage is right in the wetland, is what they're
The road, the road goes through them.
Well, it's just built up, they were wet.
The, the, the buildings are actually higher, they're not, the buildings aren't in the wetland, they're. Yeah, yeah.
They expanded their.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting.
I'm trying to overlay it with Google.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right there.
Okay, alright, well, thank you, everybody.